Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Wallace Middle School, the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer. And please pray for the victims of the shooting in Texas and all the other victims. Commissioner Stango, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have our report from Mr. LaRusso and his team. Good evening.
And thank you for joining us at Wallace this evening. Just want to take a few minutes just to go over a little bit about Wallace. We are currently the largest middle school in the district with a population as of five o'clock tonight at eleven hundred and seventy-eight students.
Seventy-eight?
Eleven hundred and seventy-eight students.
Wow.
Actually, the second-largest school in the district. We're second only to Kennedy High School. We have here two hundred and seventy students who do receive some sort of special needs or have special needs, have received some sort of programming, which is approximately twenty-three percent of our population here at Wallace. We share a campus with Crosby High School, as you know, and I'm not completely certain on the numbers, but I believe we're pretty close to a hundred-acre campus here with well over 2,000 students in this one complex. We draw from a geographical area that you know that goes, and I did my map skills here, so east over to the Wilkachesha Line, north as far as Long Hill, west to, if it makes sense, to East Main Street, as far down as Welton, which is the area right behind the Barnes &amp; Noble Plaza, and we go as far south as Sylvan Avenue. So we have a large geographical area, and we encompass, I think, approximately three or four of the large housing projects in the city. At Wallace, we house the Applied Behavioral Program here for students with autism. Pretty special program. We do house the middle school and high school program. Middle school program has about nine students right now. High school program, between fifteen to seventeen students. And we are exploring for this marking period, adding an actual adapted PE program that will work specifically with those students in addition to their regular schedule. And before I go on, I do need to, as I was remiss, introduce the House Principals with me. Mrs. Hammond is our Principal in the Blue House, Mrs. McCarthy in the Red House, and Mrs. Regan is the Gold House Principal.
Where's your colors? No. We didn't think of that.
Why not? All right. One thing, as I mentioned with our ABA program, it's a special program here that I think sets us apart from many schools. Students with autism are part of our regular programming. They do attend, they have two classrooms downstairs, and those students will stay with us until they're 21. So they become a very, I don't know what the correct word is, but they're a very important part of our population here at Wallace. And it's very interesting to watch the interaction with our students in the building with our special needs kids. You could be on the basement floor, and a kid might come by on a giant three-wheeled bicycle, and our kids just walk by as if it's the norm, and anyone else in the building would just kind of question, "Did someone just come by here on a bike?" But our kids, it doesn't faze them, whether they're in class with these students or in the cafeteria. And I think it shows a genuine caring for everybody in the building, especially those students with special needs, and an acceptance, which makes our population pretty special. And I think that's something that, I don't know if you can teach that, but it makes the building a very special place, and everyone just sort of feels the same about, you know, that special population in our building. So I think that's very important. That's one of the key factors here that makes us a very unique building. We have approximately 160 staff members here, and that includes 96 teachers and support staff, additional contracted people as speech and language pathologists, occupational and physical therapists, BCBAs. We have 28 paraprofessionals, including behavior therapists, two prevention specialists, attendance counselor, an SRO, three nursing staff, 20 custodial and kitchen staff, and a partridge in a pear tree. We're, it is a large building. The teaching staff here, interesting to note that 40% of our staff has between one and 10 years' experience, which is not, I mean, it's a lot, but not compared to, you know, many buildings. There has been some turnover in recent years, but we also have just under 40% of our staff with between 11 and 25 years of experience. We have seven people with 26 to 35 years, and in the range that we call "Don't Ask", there are two. So we have people that have been here for all of their career, you know, whether they started here and continue to stay in Waterbury, which I think is a testament to, number one, I think, to the school, but to the district itself, that we do have a significant amount of longevity. Some highlights just of the building, and if you want to jump in any time, let me know. Since 2013, we've seen a significant drop in the out-of-school suspensions here at Wallace. And that was actually highlighted by the governor's visit last year through the school-based diversion program. Approximately 60% drop over the last two years in a number of out-of-school suspensions. And I think that's due to a couple of things. We do utilize our in-school suspension program more than we ever have, but the fact that we have a very effective prevention team, and that team is made up of school counselors, psychologists, social workers, our two prevention specialists, our attendance counselor, and our SRO. So that's a very effective team that we put to good use. So suspension is our last alternative, and we meet with kids. They will do peer mediation and set up groups for kids with similar issues that are interfering with their learning in school. But we spend a great deal of time with intervention as opposed to maybe 15 years ago, that wasn't really the thought process. It was if it was a problem, then it was a suspension. We don't think that way anymore, and we've tried to turn that feeling around here at the building. We do recognize that we do need to move forward academically in a number of areas. Math, we've made progress. Our teams meet with fidelity every week. Each House Principal handles a specific content area, and they do meet. And math, and Mrs. Regan is in charge of the math, they have set up benchmark assessments that'll be set up for this year, and our instructional data teams are very productive. They meet each week to discuss student work, they collaborate on what's working and what's not, reviewing the test scores. So it has been very productive for us. English Language Arts is Ms. McCarthy, and we've seen progress in English Language Arts. About last year, 22% of the students were proficient. It's a gain, but obviously nowhere near where we'd like to be. But we're taking a look at it and saying, you know, we're taking the small victories and just keep trying to make sure the kids understand we are getting better, and they're doing well. So we try to promote every bit of anything that's positive within the building. Mrs. Hammond handles all of our social studies and works with science also. So those teams meet continually every week, and we have a regular scheduled time carved out in the schedule, so there is, there's no question about when they'll meet and where they'll meet. One thing that I think we do here very well is we have a very successful PBIS program. Mrs. Hammond has taken that over from Mrs. Regan, and I'm just going to get, I've limited her to just a minute or so because she loves to talk about it, so Cindy, if you want to...
If you could use the microphone.
I'm pretty loud. Okay. So I have to say, Allison Kremlins, our grade eight teacher, is the Chair of the Committee, and we have many other teachers that do volunteer their time once a week, and we meet. So I could go on and on, but I'm just going to highlight some of our activities for the 2017 and '18 school year. Posters, poster contests on October 27, 2017. The themes is "To Choose From" was "To Stop Bullying", "Spread Kindness", "Bullying", "Be Smart, Don't Start", or "Say No to Bullying", "Stand Up Strong", and "Stand Together", that coincide with the October National Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. We also have another poster contest that will be coming on board in February, which is the PBIS Kindness Door Decorating Contest, excuse me, which is to coincide with the Random Act of Kindness Week, February 11 through the 17th, 2018. We have game days for the kids, which they really, really enjoy. October 17, we had our first game day for grades seven and eight, and they had to earn so many pause tickets, and games such as Connect Four, et cetera, et cetera, with raffles. We have an upcoming pep rally. We have our Student of the Month, which is each month students are nominated, as well as a breakfast in December and May, which two teachers on the committee do cook the pancakes, and we have refreshments for them with certificates and raffles once again. Students who earn first honors this year for the first marking period will be awarded a nap, you know, those drawstring backpacks, so, and it says Wallace Middle School, to try to make sure we touch on everyone. We do have PBIS dances, grade six, March 2018, grade seven, and then to help with attendance, every two weeks we do have an attendance raffle, where the homeroom teachers put the raffle tickets in each house office, and they're given a bag full of goodies, as well as a Dunkin' Donuts card. PBIS poster contest, and that's just a few of what we do.
Excellent.
We do try to look at, oh, the Make My Day Award as well, with the water bottles.
Nice, thank you.
Students are nominated for Random Act of Kindness, and they absolutely enjoy it. We have students who turn in $20, you know, that they find, $5. They will help students who have come, you know, that don't speak English, and if they do speak Spanish or the language, they'll help us, you know, along as well, so.
Great.
And we do meet, we talk about areas of strengths and weaknesses. Thank you.
Excellent. Well done. Very concise.
Please don't eat the candy while you're in there. I think there's, if you come into the building, I think there's just a general sense of well-being as you walk through. During most of the day, you can come in, and the halls are relatively clear, some kids moving around, you know, other than the times when we have all 1,200 moving for class changes, the building is very quiet, and I think we've done a couple of things in the last couple of years. We changed our schedule, which allowed us to change all the traffic patterns in the building, which made it much easier to limit the number of students in the building at one time. And there's a continuous presence of teachers and administrators in the hallway.
Makes a difference.
And I think that's done, not in a way to be punitive, but it's a way to build relationships. And I think that helps us tremendously when we're in the hall and you stop and talk to a kid about, you know, what's going on, how's the day going, you know, how's basketball practice, or whatever, anything. I saw you in the after-school program. But those things that we can stop and talk to them with really make a difference, and they view us differently, but it just helps to build a better atmosphere within the building. And I think, and teachers here, I think if you ask them, would attest to it, we operate really on one simple philosophy, and we talk about it each year in the very beginning, and I'm, you know, I go back over it during the course of the year at our staff meetings. And that's simply that the parents of the children, whose children attend Wallace Middle School, have the exact same expectations that we have for our own children, and that's exactly the way we want them treated. Treat them just as you would want your own child treated. So it sounds pretty basic, but I think it's something that we talk about and we stress, and I think that's helped us to be successful. Couple of things that I think are really positive. We do have a Leos Club here, which is sort of a junior-style Lions Club, since the mascot is the lion. Our Leos Club does things throughout the course of the year. They're here at Open House directing parents. They were here tonight at the door directing people where to go. They do visit the Cheshire House, which is located directly across the street. They visit Cheshire House, right now it's once a month. Cheshire House has asked for us to come over more often. They love visiting the residents. It's a great relationship, and it's done, it's done a lot of good for not just the residents there, but for our students, too. So it's really, it's really been a positive program. In the last year, we did, we look at our billing not only just as academic, but also trying to develop, you know, the all-around, all-around kids. So last year, we were very lucky. We received a $5,000 donation from a friend who didn't really want to be known, and we were able to renovate our fitness center. And you saw, you may see on some of the slides that go by behind you, some of the things that we've done there, and we've really upgraded that. So now, as part of a regular phys ed program, we have a very functional physical education center that, or a fitness center. It looks kind of like a junior YMCA that the kids can use as part of the phys ed program. So it's been very effective. Each morning, if you walk in, we have, in the lobby, there is a television that you see, and what you see behind you is on the television every day. So if anything happens in the school, if it's an athletic event, if kids are doing a science experiment, if they're going on a project adventure, teachers are encouraged to take pictures. They send those to one of our teachers, and every day you can see new pictures go up of the kids in the building, and they can get to spot themselves. And there's, there's nothing better than to come down the hall sometimes and see, you know, 10 or 15 kids stopping and just pointing at themselves or their friends. So, you know, they recognize all the good stuff that they do and their friends do. So it's a, it really has created a positive atmosphere. So in closing, I think there's just a couple of things that really make us, or have contributed to our success here, and I'm first going to compliment the three House Principals that I work with. We are a very cohesive team. We meet every morning. We talk about what's going on in the building. I have complete trust in the decisions that they make, and anything that happens here, if there's a question, we meet together to go over it. So no one ever feels like they're isolated, but I will say that the decisions they make, I have confidence in, so makes my job that much easier. We have a staff here, again, many have been here for many years, and some new people, but the fact is, there are staff that cares about kids, and there's no way a school can be successful unless, unless that's here, unless that's a parent. Kids are very intuitive, and they know when teachers care, and I think we've done a great job building relationships with kids, and I think that's what's made us successful. And the other thing is the families that work with us every day. A lot of our families have been here for a long time, and they've had two or three kids come through. They still live in the neighborhoods. There's actually a couple of teachers here on staff that I had as students at Wendell Cross who have remained here. That was back, I think, in 1996 when I was first teaching, when I first started, a little before that. But it's nice to know that, you know, families have stayed here, and they have the confidence to come in and say, you know, "I need to speak to one of the House Principals", and they know who they're going to talk to. So that makes it that much easier. So we try to make it as comfortable an atmosphere as we can, and I think we've done a pretty good job at that.
Great.
So, thank you very much.
Commissioners, Commissioner Dan Stone.
We don't, we have questions. Thank you, Madam President. Do I have questions? What? Actually, your talk lowered my questions from three to two, so everybody should be happy about that. Charles wants a clap. However, first off, you mentioned the environment, basically, special it or not, the kids don't notice each other, which is a great thing, and I hear that. Where are we at, at this level, then, Unified Sports?
We do, we have, we began our Unified Arts, our Unified Sports Program last year, our first year. So we are operating a Unified Sports Program.
That's fantastic. What sports are you doing?
Usually, whatever, whatever is available, they do, last year they did some bowling events at the Wilkachesha Lanes, basketball games with the schools within the city, and at the end of the year, they're participating in a track. If there is an issue that needs to be dealt with within the discipline policy, we handle it, no questions asked. And if there are options for us in terms of how we can deal with kids as opposed to suspension, then we'll explore those. But there are some instances where suspension is necessary, and that's never questioned.
Okay. Perfect. For, is there anything in policy that this Board needs to do to help you make sure, like I said, you know, it's great that the suspensions go down, but I don't want to do it just to do it.
Can I just add to that?
Sure.
If we do notice a certain grade level, you know, needs some kind of lesson, we will go to our counselor and have our counselors actually go in and give a lesson to the children as a whole. So we do implement that as well, and I just wanted to add to it.
Okay. And I like that answer. Do we share that with other middle schools or other high schools, that we do things of that nature?
You know, I can't speak for the other middle schools, but my guess is that both, both Principals there do very similar things in terms of how their school counselors operate.
All right. I know we have some ILDs here tonight.
All three of you have the same exact procedures and have very rich tier-one interventions. So they are all great.
Okay. Procedures is one thing. I want to make sure we share data on how we deal with the issues.
We do. We have applied data.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you. Mr. LaRusso, I always love coming here, the atmosphere. As soon as you walk in the door, you just feel it. It's very positive. Refresh my memory, Jackie Davis was here, correct?
That is correct. She was our behavior, our prevention specialist.
School-based, yes. And so, and the school did receive an award for that, am I not mistaken?
That's, last year, the governor was here to recognize her, and Jackie was part of that school-based diversion program.
Absolutely. And I want to compliment you on the reduction of suspensions, et cetera, because we need to look at what's causing that first, and then see what we can do to intervene. And that's what the whole school-based intervention program, I thought, was geared towards. So I just want to congratulate you on that. Now, Mr. Henry, this was the, if you recall, we were speaking yesterday regarding the crossing guards and the, and the, and this is, I don't think this is anything really for you to look into, Mr. LaRusso, but there was a concern regarding our kids crossing over with the construction and everything out here, the number of times they have to cross the street, I'm talking about perhaps Scott Gardens, for example, take that, that they have to cross three times. They have to cross East Main Street, they have to cross another area, which is an exit or entrance to a highway, then they have to cross another area, and we have no crossing guards, we have no crossing area, the lines, and the safety issue, all right, Mr. Henry? So this is really where we need to really look at this, and I had a chance, and I had a chance to, to kind of look at this with the unfortunate incident that happened with our former state representative, Celine James. I think it's very wise for us to look at this. I know this is a temporary, well, temporary, four years or so that will be in this predicament, but if you look at where the kids catch the buses on East Main Street and the safety issue, when it starts snowing, we start piling up the snow, that's something that we really need to look at, and to ensure that our kids are safe when they're crossing the street, East Main Street, the exit over here, and then the other one, and walking up Scott Road. So I'll let you address that.
Although, for the most part, those students from here are all on buses.
They are all on buses?
So we don't, we don't have anyone.
So there's no, there's no walking?
We shouldn't, the only students that would walk would be the ones that would exit the top driveway closest to Rotella.
Right.
So, but other than that, we don't cross over toward the Winds Gas Station.
Very good.
So that's, that's limited. Everyone takes a bus up towards Scott Gardens, Austin Road, that area.
All right. So that, that makes me feel better because I think it was a couple of parents that brought that issue up.
Yeah. High school may, I don't know if, the city bus actually picks up right at the end of our driveway.
Got it.
So that's a possibility. And even when we go to Cheshire House, one of our students, they walk, Officer Rivera, who is our SRO.
Yes.
Actually comes down to the driveway and stops traffic, brings our kids across.
All right.
And then, on the return, is there to bring them back.
All right. So if you, just saying, if you need crossing guards, whatever, please don't hesitate.
Thank you.
To say something, because, you know, being out in Waterbury, you know, the parents come up and say, "Hey, you know, my kids are crossing", or, you know, "There's no crossing guards, et cetera." So we need to know that, if you need that type of assistance, to let us know.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you very much, doing a great job.
Thank you. It's not, it's not, it's not one person, though, it's everybody here.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any of your staff here tonight? Any other staff you'd like to stand?
Any of our staff in back? Mrs. Madrick? Mr. Thayer? Mr. Ward?
All right. Thank you for coming. Do you have any parents or other members here?
No parents here. Oh, yeah.
Okay. She raised her hand. Hi.
Actually, our, one of our ladies who works in our health suite, Melissa Adorno, is here, who's also newly elected to the Board. Melissa, you want to wait?
Congratulations. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work. Okay. At this point, are there any members of the public who would like to speak this evening? We have changed our protocol so that we're going to have two meetings, one, the first Thursday of the month, and the third, and at both meetings, the public will have an opportunity to speak. So the first, Elia Perez. Oh, good.
Elia Perez.
Oh, so.
I'm only four.
Oh, my God. We're so happy you're here with us tonight. All right. I got to get one of my scripts for this meeting.
I was potty trained at home. I survived. No teacher helped me.
Today at work was Hero Day, where you were allowed to wear a shirt with your hero on it. I could have chosen anyone, Batman, Wonder Woman, Minnie Mouse, et cetera, but in the end, I chose the best one of all, my dad. He did not have superpowers, special gadgets, or a cape. He had what was important, love and being a parent. He grew up in poverty in the Puerto Rico Mountains, being raised by his grandparents and living with his aunts and uncles. Wanting to become independent, he came to the United States, where he worked very hard, trimming trees, working in a meat market, and in factories. Through this time, he sent for his brothers, helped his mother, and started his own family. He, along with my mother, raised most of her seven siblings, raised their four children, adopted two others, and fostered many other children, including nieces and nephews. The responsibility of parenting is one that he never shoved onto another, especially the school system. This was an institution to be respected, where one went to learn. Parenting was, is, and always should be a parent's top priority, regardless of gender, race, religion, or economic status. Upon reviewing Connecticut's School Readiness Preschool Program guidelines and objectives, it was evident how it encourages parent involvement in their child's development and education. How is the city planning on getting parents involved with potty training? I find this rather difficult to accomplish, when just last week, Commissioner Awad stated her concern... her concern over a district-wide event for parents, and only three showed up. Is this the same involvement the schools should expect from parents who do not want to potty train? Who is going to make sure parents are implementing the recommendations set forth in a plan at home? Are assistants expected to do home visits? How are the assistants supposed to help a traumatized child who has been sexually abused? Would this not traumatize the child more, having a total stranger try to help them clean themselves? Potty training is a private matter. By having students potty training in school, they will be forced to use the facilities in front of a new stranger, the assistant, plus seven unknown children. Or will the child be going to the bathroom with two adults, so that there is always a witness? Let's not forget, many medical offices have implemented this practice to avoid lawsuits. Who will this second adult be? Another assistant who was pulled from her classroom while she is working with a small group, now affecting another class because of toileting? Or do we interrupt the teacher's prep time as she prepares instruction for future lessons for her class? Maybe the school nurse who is attending to children in need of her services, who is not allowed to touch the child? Or the school administration? What happens when an assistant is working as a one-on-one with a child, as is proposed to change in the new policy under the assistant's job description? The child is having a meltdown, then you have the child who is being potty trained has to go to the bathroom. How does the assistant choose between these two situations, since the teachers are now excluded from this toileting policy? Are assistants required to lift children onto the changing tables? What is the max weight for an assistant to lift before being hurt, or their backs being pulled? What is the max weight of a child allowed on a table, since they are now three- and four-year-olds? What if, what happens if a child falls off this table, or if the tire, the table breaks while the child is on it? When a parent decides to put their child in daycare, parents are allowed to interview the staff and centers before making a decision. Will they be doing the same with the assistants? Here are two ideas. Why not have the parents come in whenever the child needs to be trained? This will allow assistants to complete their daily responsibilities, give that child their privacy, and at the same time, parents are fulfilling their responsibility as parents. Of course, this must be done in a timely manner, and they must have a backup, an entrusted family member or friend, just in case the parent is unavailable. If you are thinking, what an inconvenience this is for parents, then yes, it will be. Because potty training takes time. Putting a child on the toilet every 20 minutes or so, time that will be constantly interrupted from teaching, affecting our students, including my child's education. The other idea is having this child put on homebound for a short period of time. The child can be placed on the teacher's roster, receive instruction at home while they are potty training, and then join the class when they are trained. Reviewing the grants information, a full-day child, one who attends school, six hours per day, at least 180 days a year, the city has reimbursed $6,000 per child per year. A student who attends two-and-a-half-hour day session for at least 180 consecutive days a year, the city has reimbursed $4,500 per child per year. In 2017, this grant has given, or will give, the City of Waterbury $10,000,052,992. This does not include $75,641 for the enhancement grant, which is used to improve quality and comprehensiveness of school readiness. If this money is reimbursed to the city, where is this money? Is this money going to be used to purchase diapers, pull-ups, gloves, sanitizer wipes, et cetera? How and where is it being spent? I'm almost done. Or is this money being used, like the Alliance Grant, as stated in the last Board of Ed meeting, where out of 22 million, 18 million has been used on other things, leaving only 6 million for education reform? Is this the reason why it is so important to approve this policy, fill the seats, and collect the money? You, the Board of Ed, have a chance to be heroes when making this decision, one that benefits all parties, the student, the family, the school system, and city. After making this decision on this policy, who will call you a hero?
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll continue with the agenda. Doreen Biola. Monthly Expenditure Report for the period of July through September 2017.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a snapshot of the first quarter of our fiscal year. Usually, the beginning of every fiscal year, we usually lump the first three months together, and then from here on in, you'll, you'll see a monthly expenditure report every month. Being that our certified payroll really doesn't hit till the end of August, so there isn't a lot of activity going on, too much in July and August on the expenditure side. As you know, it took a lot for us to get to this balanced budget last year. So, I promise that we are monitoring these accounts very closely, especially the salary accounts, and then our variable accounts are out of district tuition, transportation, and our maintenance accounts. So, we'll keep you abreast each month of the year. So, you know, just a lot of close monitoring and a lot of communication back to the board, and this is our, our plan to get through this year. Any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. Still taking the report in, to be honest. But one thing I did notice is, starting over the summer, our overtime, and I think using those numbers to project, we do look okay. However, we know that during the course of the school year, especially overtime, skyrockets because we're giving out our facilities and we're not charging people. So, when will we recalculate the overtime?
Are you meaning for the outside activities?
Yes.
Overtime? We can look into that.
Yeah, if you would, because I know the summer overtime's low, as it should be, right? But as the school year enters.
Yeah.
We know, when I'm going off on the school usage.
Yeah, especially towards the, the middle and, and the end of the year.
Right.
Right.
Okay, our summer, our Sunday usage goes up, our Saturday usage goes up. So, if we're using a trend off the summer, you know, I don't have a lot of confidence in that. But I would love to see back, maybe come January, February, if we could see how we're still calculating forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. I had a question in terms of openings of personnel. How many unfilled personnel slots do we have at this point?
Certified or none?
Well, I mean, all, school openings that are not filled, that we were not filling because of the budget, or?
Well, we do have, in this budget, we do have a, a number of non-certified positions that are frozen for the year.
Okay.
And those are going to be frozen.
They're still frozen, okay.
Yes, they're still frozen, because that's how we balance to this budget.
Okay.
So, those will remain frozen. In speaking with the city's Budget Office today, because all of these non-certified positions that have opened go to the CCOC Committee, which is the cost containment oversight, a lot of our maintenance positions, I think, we're going to be letting go. There's some that are, that were held back, I think, just because, in light of not us having a state budget.
Yeah, right.
But none of these certified positions or anything that affected a classroom was ever held up.
Okay.
As was even the supplies and the necessities inside the classroom, nothing that affected inside of a classroom that we ever held up. We did pull the reins a little bit on some of the other types of purchases until we had, you know, some clarification of the state budget.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for keeping us surprised. We have, in addition to the agenda tonight, I think you've all received it, 2A. Is there anyone here to speak to it? Mr. Schwartz? Come on down. This was in addition to the, to the agenda tonight. It has to do with a grant that is pretty, we get this every year, correct?
Yes. It's a grant that, that helps fund the initiative, and it goes specifically to curricular materials and running the Waterbury Youth Services Council Program.
Great. Any other question, any questions? Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. It says here that the grant is a period of July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018. So, if it's July 1st, is there a reason why it comes before us in November?
Yeah, I'll check. I, I know there was some conversation with Corporation Council, I don't, I believe because the money wasn't released yet, but I can, I can check on that for you, Mr. Vanstone. Mr. Gorman does give his sincerest apologies for not being here. He, he had a, an engagement in Farmington. We weren't sure this was going to get on this board agenda, but I will find that out for you and get that, too.
So, do we have an action on this, or?
I see, we will vote on it next week.
So, we're going to vote on something that started?
I'm not sure if the program is.
Five months ago?
I'm not sure if the, I think that's the funding timeline for the, for the program, but I don't believe it has started yet, but I will find out through Mr. Gorman.
That'd be nice to know, if we're voting on something that started five months ago.
I agree.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I don't know. So, we'll find out. My sense is, like everything else, it wasn't, the money was not released because of the budget, but we'll find out. Any other questions?
I didn't even know I was done.
Oh, go ahead.
Just once again, we're receiving stuff so late. I'm not sure even to mention July 1st on something dated November 8th. Why does it even come to us if that's the case? You know, I'm a little confused. Either it should come to us, or it shouldn't come to us. And if this is coming to us, and you're asking me to vote on something, how is there a start date five months ago? So, I would like some answers, and that could very well determine how we vote. This is just getting to be old, that we get stuff so late. It's nice that it comes to us, you know, from the mayor's office, but again, if this stuff is five months old, why are we voting on it? Why does it even come to us? You're basically telling us we have no reason to even be here. So, we really need to get this in shape. It's getting very old that we get this stuff so late. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Commissioner Harvey.
Could we, until we determine, until we determine why this is coming to us so late, can we put this, make sure this is taken off of consent?
Okay.
Until we get an answer as to why this is so. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much. The next is our summer school update from Mr. Theriot and Mrs. Bane. Did you get that?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so, summer school 2017, I was the coordinator again.
Are you, are you showing them?
Yes, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Let me turn it out.
So, we had pretty much the same core of administrators. We did add the Buck Hill Annex underneath the Sort of Success Program, even though they had different criteria, because they're mostly the pre-K students and specialized students, but we did have Ms. D. Giovanni, Ms. Thomasala, Mrs. Rosser, Ms. Biello, as our site administrators for the other Sort of Success sites. They're the same group that I think we've had for three years in a row now. Our program did change in hours, mostly because of the funding. Student hours were from 8:30 to 12:30. That was to accommodate the IEPs for students for ESY. The program, July 10th through August 3rd. We ran it later, was the same as last year, so the end date is closer to the beginning of the regular school year. The only exception to this is the specialized programs at Gil Martin and at Buck Hill, who were Monday through Friday, the same times. So, the student selection, same as last year, for kindergarten, were the students who were red in PSF, phoneme segmentation fluency. The students for grades one through three were dorffluency, red students who were in the red, that's well below grade level. I did give principals a little leeway. Every once in a while, you have a student who might be in the little gray area where they might have been successful in that one measure, but still needs more support. We did give five additional student limits for each principal for recommendation.
Just with this slide, I, I would just like to give you some background, too. With the state mandates for summer school, five years ago, we had 2,400 students that were eligible. Two years ago, we had 1,300, and this past summer, we had 748. So, we're making a clear path in this area. I think it's important to bring up.
Well, I just want to clarify, we did have more students who were eligible for summer school than the 748, but we did have 748 show up.
Show up.
Show up. So, we did have 929 students who did sign up for summer school. Only 748 showed up. Of roughly that 748, oop, I'm sorry, hold on, there we go, 75% of them attended 13 of the 16 days. Just as a side note, between the last day of school and, I said summer school, but it's actually the first day or two, the customer service that the site administrators and myself were able to provide, we had about 300 changes of addresses or accommodations. And just what goes into that, it's calling the bus company, it's calling crossing guards, it's calling nurses, it's calling, basically, everyone that's going to be involved with that student's life during summer school has to be contacted. So, it's a huge, that's a huge piece, but, but again, very proud of the customer service that our district has provided for our students, and I, and I do have to thank the site administrators greatly for that.
I also want to thank the bus company, who really does not even want to answer our calls after some point. But these 300 changes of address, too, they can be because of the transition, the transient rates that we have in Waterbury, but it also is where some children go to daycares that are not in their, with their regular home areas. So, that encompasses all of this, and it's changing up till the first or second day of school, summer school.
Okay, so, now, students are now identified for summer school through math. However, math is a big part of our program. There's some nice growth here. So, from the pre-test to the post-test, before I go into the, the actual scores here, what we do is, we give the kindergarten student who just finished their first kindergarten year, going into first grade, a little preview of what they're going to study in math at the beginning of their grade one, and that's, that's true for grades two and grade three as well. So, if you see the growth here, the students were able to show success at what they're going to see in a couple weeks after summer school. So, there's some nice growth there, and the tests are very rigorous and align to what the students will be seeing in the fall.
These are district-made assessments, and if you look at the numbers, we're very, very happy with the growth, especially in our ELA and Special Ed, excuse me, our EL and our Special Ed population. We do have, in, in providing the, all of the instruction for these students, they're also beginning to be taught concepts for the grade they're going into. So, a lot of this is, this is an area, to me, where we have to really work on as far as closing that achievement gap. And the, the summer slide in math, it goes about 2.6% for children who do not attend. So, we see all of these statistics, and it's looking pretty good for these children.
Okay, I'm sorry for the massive amount of information on here. So, what I did is, I looked at the measures for each grade level, and I compared the students who attended summer school and the students who were supposed to attend summer school but did not. So, if you look at the PSF for kindergarten, I looked at their end-of-year measure from '16-'17 and compared it to how they performed in the fall for the beginning-of-year assessment at '17-'18. So, for the students who did attend in kindergarten, they increased 5.6 phonemes per, well, it's not per, it's not per time, but kindergarten who did not attend actually went down 3.8 words per minute. And if you continued down, that same trend happens for grade-one fluency, where they increased 4.1, and the students who did not attend lost a half word per minute. The only exception would be grade-three, who actually did both. They did pretty well this year. For the students who did attend, increased 8.2 words per minute, as opposed to the students who did not attend, increased 5.7. So, that's. as opposed to the students who did not attend, increased 5.7. So that's, that's a nice job on the, those students who performed well in grade three. But you definitely see the, how the summer slide was prevented, and we actually saw some growth in our summer school So some of the parent feedback. I am happy with the Waterbury Summer School Program. 87% agree or strongly agree. I'm hoping some of the 200 or 300 students that needed a ch, address change were part of that. The Waterbury Summer School Program helps my child in reading. 86, I'm sorry, 90% agree for this year. 86, that was supposed to be deleted out from last year. The Waterbury Summer School Program helps my child in 2017. 85% of the students or families agree or strongly agree. And then, I am satisfied with how the summer school program has communicated with me about my child. This is one of the lower percentages, and it's something that's been, it's been a challenge of mine since I started summer school five years ago. It's very hard. We give them the dates, we give them the times, we give them the schools, we, I give them my office phone number, which does not stop ringing through June and the first week of July. But we, we, we get it done, and I would like to see that 77% go up closer to 90% or higher for next year. But that, that is, that's one of my professional challenges for this coming year. Staff survey results, 92% agreed or strongly agreed that curriculums were rigorous, and 92% agreed or strongly agreed that the curriculums were easy to navigate. A lot of times, we get teachers who have to teach a different grade level. They have to step into something that they're not typically used to, and they were able to get, get right in there and teach what they needed to teach for our summer school students. And with that, if you have any questions?
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much for this information. My first question is, did we have summer school for our high school kids?
Yes, but-
We did? And so where's, where's that information?
So the, the high school students did have, the credit recovery program is the program that they can pay for to come in and recover credit. We had 99 students attend, and 99% earned their credit for 130 credits this summer.
Okay.
That was at WAMs.
Okay. Now, I would like to receive this report electronically, because I couldn't really see it on the, on the screen.
We have it electronically, it's here.
It is? Is it in here?
Yes.
Okay, well, my mistake, because I've been hoofing it, so I didn't get a chance.
You've been very busy.
I apologize for that. All right, so this report was for grade, grade kindergarten, or where's it, to, to grade three?
K through three.
Okay. Now, what happens with the kids from grade three on? Do we have any summer school there, middle school-ish?
Middle school, legislatively, we, we were, usually that money comes from either priority school districts or Alliance grant. That money was-
So we didn't?
Was, was cut. For Alliance last year, it was cut 250,000 in the middle of the year, then it was flat funded. So we, we weren't able to provide the same level of service. That was one of the, the cuts that was, was in for the middle school transition. Fourth and fifth grade, we've historically done fourth grade as a, as a, in addition to K to three, but again, you could see that the, not only was the afternoon caught back-
Yeah.
We also didn't have enough funding to also provide for the fourth grade for this, for, for last summer, which was upsetting, because I don't know if you recall, Commissioner Harvey or not, providing an extended summer service was something that I was adamant about, and so that was a difficult call for us to make.
All right. Now, the, just a question regarding, because my, my brain right now is all over the place. So I'm gonna go back to the high school. Did we have the same issue with transportation? Did we not provide, did we provide transportation for those kids with the high school age, or did we do the same type of setup where they had to be on a bus route and et cetera?
It was at WAMs. It was held at WAMs.
Just WAMs?
WAMs, correct. And it's a, and it's a, it's a one-stop shop for students that are, that are interested in paying to recover for their credit recovery. So we, we hold it at one place as in, for a few reasons. If we spread it out throughout the, the district, we don't usually have, the way the numbers work out with the number of students and teachers, it just costs more to run the program, to be able to run those services. And sometimes with those computer labs, it was, it's a little bit easier to hold a one, one hub shop, but I know, Mr. White, it's something that we go back and forth on, it's something that we can look into, because I know if it's at one, each location around the city, it might be a little bit easier for students to get there, especially if no transportation is offered. And I think Mr. White has a few things to add to that.
We have extra mics up here if you need them.
Good evening. Yes, we centralized at WAMs, particularly because all bus routes cross the green. And then, as Darren said, related to the courses, because it, it is fee-based, so we need to have enough students taking a course-
Right.
-in order to make it effective. And sometimes you only have three or four kids, so rather than have that course repeated at multiple locations, having all of those there, it is much more efficient, and we can provide the services, and additionally have online courses when necessary.
Okay. So, okay, so let me go back to the grade kindergarten through three. But, but stay there, Mr. White. How are we tracking the results of the summer school, the connection between the summer school and their next grade teacher? How, how are we doing that?
So with the M-class system, Amplify, the reading database that we use, I was able to use the tech department, who I also have to owe big thanks to-
Okay.
-was able to merge the information. So the students who came to summer school, I have their student ID, were able to link how they did in M-class back in June, and then again, here in September, October. So I was able to do that, and we, you know, I mean, the possibilities are limitless, but-
All right. So, so you're saying that the teacher, their teacher will be able to look at their results, the students' results, and then apply that or use that as history? You know, how, how is it that that information's being used by the teacher?
Yeah, so we use the M-class system during summer school as well.
Right.
So that data is actually, it's, it's entered spontaneously, and the, the teachers have access to that as well. All their progress monitoring data is in that system.
Okay, good. Last question. How many of our students were, needed math skills improved? Because I know that we, we have a shortage of math teachers, and I've heard the complaints from the parents in regards to the math teachers, that we don't have enough. So how many of our students, do we know how many of our students needed math skills improved?
I would venture to say the vast majority, since we were about 7% at, in the grade level last year, so-
Yes.
Again, they're identified by their ELA score, per the legislation.
Okay.
The, the pre- and post-assessment growth is, as you saw, was, was, we did fairly well with about 20% growth on many of those assessments, but-
Right.
-many of our students do benefit from the additional work of mathematics, and we don't want to make it completely literacy-based. We know our students struggle in math, and I believe we use some information from iReady to, to work this program, which is what we usually use during the school year. So it's a continuous basis, again, to your, to the M-class question. Teachers see that live, and it's a continuation of what they did previous year, moving into the next year. But yes, any chance we can get to, to bump up the math is, is well, well, well-needed.
Absolutely. All right. Okay.
I just wanted to add, if you look at that slide, once, once you-
Okay, once I look at it, yes.
-you see it, yes, you'll see the grades two and three have the largest percentages of growth there.
Beautiful.
And it, those are the grades that had the iReady program.
Okay.
So it will start in second grade. So there is a direct correlation there, and I think the students are utilizing it. I was in math IDTs all day today, and the teachers know that they need that 45 minutes per week, per child, to be on there to make some sort of a difference. So, yeah, that's being closely monitored.
All right. So, so lastly, I know this is not a question, so I'm not asking a question, but, you know, I don't know if we were, we received this information before the summer last, this year. So if we can do that, you know, just kind of give us an idea of what you got, you have planned for the summer-
Absolutely.
And then, you know, come back and follow up like you're doing now, to let us know how things turned out. That would be great. And just keep, you know, keep track of how our students are doing. All right? Thank you very much.
Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I was doing a little math in public, because the agenda said to be distributed, so I actually didn't look for it in the packet, so-
Yes, it's on the line.
Okay, I'll go back to it. But math in public was 181 who signed up, did not show. Did anyone lose a seat because we designated anything to those 181?
No. So, no. We made sure that we had, everyone who was eligible to go, we would have had a place for them. So there was no one that lost a seat. We weren't able to contact families to add students on at that point, and, you know, but at that point, all the students who were eligible were already invited and had the opportunity to come.
Maybe, maybe we need a little bit of effort next year to say, look, please be serious about this, because you could bump someone who really wants to come. 181's a big number. It's percentage-wise, I won't do that math in public. It's significant to the number that came. So that's really not fair to other students who may be there on defense. I'm sure K to three, it's really the parents making decisions, so thank you, So that leads me to say, those are at least students, or more so parents, that are committed to getting better in the summer. To be quite honest, I would hope the percentages were a little higher, if they're committed students. The next thing I want to say is, it was interesting to hear, thank you, Commissioner Harvey, for asking this question, about greater than grade three in middle school. I do kind of find it ironic that we're saying that $50,000 wasn't there for us to have a summer school program to improve math scores in Alliance, but we found room to hire someone for $103,000 in Alliance. Pretty ironic. So we really need to reconsider where we spend this money. I know I'm a broken record, but we just told kids, because of $50,000, they couldn't have extra math help in the summer, but twice that amount, we hired a supervisor. Thank you.
Okay, I just had a question. I was at Gil Martin School, and the teachers use Dojo to communicate with the parents, and everybody seems to love it. Do we do that during the summer school program? Or is that, is that not appropriate there?
It's not that it's not appropriate, but with the amount of time, I mean, it's a possibility, something we could look into, but with the logistics, by the time everything gets all caught up-
Okay, all right.
It, although it is, it is a possibility for the communication tool.
I mean, they seem to love it. I mean-
Yeah.
-it's instant communication with the families and, you know, their kids in school. It just seemed like it was a great, a great program.
Yeah.
But anyway, it's just what-
It's a possibility.
Any other questions? Commissioner Sweeney?
Mr. Theriot, the testing that takes place that identifies students who need to go, who need summer school, when does it take place?
It takes, it takes place in May, and that's, again, it's a timeframe that we don't have much control over, but it's a, it's a, it's difficult, because they get, parents get a letter in January, February, that their child is in danger of, of retention, and that they may have to attend summer school based on their scores in May, which usually spawns conversations with the parents. And then, that's where it becomes very difficult, because you get this information very late, and then you have to get out the information to parents that their child now is, is, has been identified to attend summer school. And then, many of them, many of them come back and say, we've made plans for the summer, because it's May, even though we do send a letter early, late January, early February, that if they are in that red category, and if they, they continue to be in red, that that's the case. I think one of the other things we may be looking into is, any student that's in yellow as well, you know, it, it may be something to look at, because some of our students do go from yellow and red, and kind of red on that line, according to the, the assessment. And so it, it's something that, you know, we constantly struggle with. If there was a timetable we could change, we would, but it, it is, it is a, it is a quick turnaround, once the students test, and we have to get the word out and sign them up and get the, all the information back to the schools and organize the classrooms.
So how long after that testing do you have to notify parents?
We, we try to do it ASAP. Yeah, we do it as soon as we, within a week, or so.
Okay.
The testing occurs in May, you have the results in May, and by the end of May, you're notifying parents?
It's late May. Sometimes it's almost really into June, and by the time we get that data together, and have the, have a go through the tech department, it, our window is literally about 40, 72 hours before we get that information out.
Okay. And then, summer school starts in August?
Uh, July.
July, I'm sorry, July.
But we have, we wanted to sign all the kids up before they leave for the summer.
Oh, yeah.
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 Okay. Yeah, no, you don't have a lot of time there, so to react, if, if, you know, you have 100 students who aren't going to show up, and maybe there are some students not necessarily identified, but who are struggling, who could benefit from that summer school, who miss out on that chance, and that's highly unfortunate. Yeah.
It is, and we try to reach as many students as possible, and that's why the customer service and, the people in my office hate me during summer school, because I put, I put my office phone number on the letterhead for summer schools, just to keep the pressures off the other schools, and the phone does not stop ringing, and, yeah, I have to thank my secretaries, they're, they're wonderful.
Well, I, thank you, I appreciate it. I know you took this on a few years ago, and you have stuck with it, and there has been amazing, you know, developments and improvement in the summer school program over the years, and it's been under your, your care-
Thank you.
And greatly appreciate that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, number five, no, number four, request approval of the board's 2018 meeting schedule. This is updated to reflect our change in bylaws for one, one meeting a month and the workshop. Any questions on that? Number five is removed from the calendar tonight. Number six, committee on school facilities and grounds. Any questions on that? Committee on school facilities and grounds, use of school facilities by outside organizations or waiver requests. Any questions? Okay, superintendent's notification to the board. Any questions? No executive session tonight, and I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.